Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to September 26th, 2023 Charton Board of Selectment Meeting. Let's stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Full house. It's always good to see. Let's go and approve the minutes from September 12th meeting.
So move as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Community relations announcements and open forum.
All right. Announcements for September 26th, 2023. Hazardous, household hazardous waste and electronic collection. Saturday, September 30th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Casella Waste Services Facility, 165 Barefoot Road, Southbridge, Mass. The flyer is on the town. Website and free vouchers are available at the Board of Health. Chapter land classification applications are due October 1st. All board departments, commissions, committee meeting is Tuesday, November 7th, 6:30 p.m. at the Senior Center. Southbridge Water Department will start its semi-annual hydrant flushing program on Sunday, October 1st, 2023, at approximately 9:00 p.m. and continue during the overnight for hours approximately six to eight weeks between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. The procedure will include cleaning of the reservoir intake screens, flushing accumulated sediment from the water mains, and testing operation of each hydrant. Customers are asked to check their water before washing clothes and also may get accumulation of sediment in their house laterals and experience some discolored water. This will clear after a brief run of the water at the tap. Please contact Southbridge Water Department at 508-8764-3207 if you have any questions or concerns. During the weekend of September 30th through October 1st, Mass DOT is planning to close Route 20 between Richardson Corner Road, Oxford Road, and Charlton and Lester Street, Route 56 in Oxford, starting Friday, September 29th at 8:00 p.m. and continue through Saturday, September 30th, 7:00 a.m. A single lane of Route 20 eastbound will reopen on Saturday at 7:00 a.m., followed by a single lane of Route 20 westbound at 12:00 p.m. Emergency vehicles will have access at all times and local access will be provided during the temporary closure. Following the weekend closure, Mass DOT will implement single-lane closures in each direction on Route 20 for the construction of the two walls to support Route 20 just each east of Richardson Corner, shortly west of Dad's Restaurant. A special town meeting is Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, 7:00 p.m. at Charlton Middle School. The recently rejuvenated Friends of Charlton Public Library is having a fall membership drive and encourage new memberships and renewals. The Friends group supports the library's programs like children's summer reading, author talks, presentations, museum passes, and more. They're also looking for volunteers to help with Friends activities. Stop by or visit the library website for more information. That's all of them.
Appointments and resignations. Open forum. Anybody here for the open forum? We don't record, so we don't know. Nobody? Okay.
All right. So appointments. We have one appointment for tonight. It is for a light equipment operator for the Highway Department. Fifteen applications were received for the open position of light equipment operator for the Highway Department. Interviews were offered to three candidates. The board is asking to appoint Andrew P. N. Cetti. I got that right. Mr. P. N. Cetti will start full-time on October 2nd, 2023. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Be honest, was that even close?
Seventeen teen.
Nice try. So moved and welcome.
Welcome, Andy. We're very, very happy and glad to have you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Bash me a full roll call. I mean, not the roll call. We just got a call for the vote.
Okay, so.
I motion Pete seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, thanks for coming in too.
I'd say everybody's here for our 6:40.
Do we have everybody?
You don't have to stay. It's fine. Trust me. It's okay.
Yeah.
Do we have everybody for 6:40?
Chief, how we doing?
Chief? Stragglers coming.
See you, Nick.
Do you want me to take anything out of order here?
Maybe, yes.
All right.
No, we don't. They probably coming. That's it. 6:40. Right on time.
Probably good.
How's your shoulder? I won't give any, like, high five or anything.
There'll be no saluting. That's why there's no hats.
For your chief.
Good evening. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the new deputy chief, Mr. Scott Corio, to the board. Mr. Corio underwent the extensive third-party process where they took a test and then they went through an assessment center. And Mr. Corio shined in this event. Comes to us from North Providence?
North Providence, yes.
North Providence. Found somebody a little further south to bring up to Charlton. He's got over 20-plus years in the business, and we just wanted to get him settled in for his first month before we decided to bring him to the board, make sure he was going to stay with us.
Some of those people leave after they meet us, but that's.
So without further ado, I'd like to bring up his wife, Christine, and have her pin him.
We got someone with, like, cameras? Because I'm assuming you're going to want this. Come on up. Have some fun.
Welcome to show, Mr. Corio.
Any words?
Or questions?
Sure.
If you have a couple?
Yeah, sure.
So, obviously, the chief picked you as a strong chief as his choice. But the, my concern is, so where do you live now?
I live in Smithfield, just over the border.
Right chicken farm. Well done.
You live in, you live in North Brookfield?
No, Smithfield.
Smithfield.
Okay. And then, in 18 months, you have to move in within 25 miles of?
Correct.
Because there are a lot of realtors that want this. Have you made, have you made any obligations? Is that your intention?
My house is being listed tomorrow, and we have an open house this weekend coming up, so.
There you go. That's, that's kind of.
And we have actively been looking, so, yes.
Chief, I know it's only been a month, but what have, what have been your initial reactions to our little community here?
I'm very impressed, actually. The members of the department are, I'm highly impressed with the work that they perform, the knowledge that they have, and hopefully I can bring a few more things that will help them develop a little bit better and make the department more than what it is now. I think that what they have currently is tremendous. The amount of people that they work with on a daily basis and the work that they get done, I am astounded by it. I'm truly speechless. And that's, you know, coming from a place where we had, we didn't worry about manpower when we showed up. I'm truly impressed every day when I see them working in action. And it excites me to be here and to be part of their team now.
Excellent.
And how do, how important do you think the substation is, what is down?
I think that.
I'm going to use that as opportunity.
That's my next question, but no, good move.
I think that a substation would be very important for the community. It is a large area that we cover, and some of the response times are quite lengthy. And that delay in an emergency response is detrimental. So, and we're only growing as time goes on. I think since I've been here, I feel that it's become more active with, with the calls that the members have been going on. So I feel that it's just a matter of time before we are even outgrowing what we have now. I mean, we're already at the capacity with the station that we're in. Breaking out at the seams, lack of better words. So it is definitely something that is needed.
We are advocating for it. I, I, I think that is, that's a clear statement, and we just would love your support, you know, while we promoting it. That's all I'm going to say.
Definitely, definitely.
And, and to the chair, that brings up another, you've got some big shoes to fill. Jason Cantera was always involved in local things, whether it was Ol Tonde or activities, or he was always there. And with you living far away, you have 18 months, so, but, but you've already listed your house, so.
Yes.
So I guess it might not be.
I am not delaying with the move. It is a seller's market for sure right now, so it's just, it's very difficult to find something.
Just make sure to check when Steve leaves, so we don't get anything.
Yeah, yeah.
But since being offered the job, I have been looking actively, and I said, you know, we're not stalling on the process at all.
It's not in your job description to partake in, in local events? It's not in your job description, but Jason Cantera kind of made it a little bit of a, maybe an expectation, so just keep that in mind. Keep that in mind.
I, I have all intentions to be actively involved in the community. I think it's important for a chief officer to be involved, to be out there leading their members, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's rare that any member of the board speaks on behalf of the board. I feel comfortable saying this, that generally, the five of the selectmen, subprisists here could be here tonight. We consider that the, like, our fire department would be second to none. So I think that you're only going to augment what's already a great team. So really, it's great having you here. And like I said, you know, go through the chief if you need anything. But I think generally, you'll find this board very supportive of the fire department for just about everything that you guys want, you know, within reason.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next year, I expect you to buy me an ice cream cone at Old Home Day.
Steve is a crooning. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Very welcome. Thank you.
Guys, thanks for coming tonight, too. We appreciate it. Except for Inspector Carlson. Thanks, guys.
Let's get down to new business.
So we skipping?
Yeah, I'll just get old business done.
Okay, so let's go to the new business.
All right. The first one is for Alex Adler. Request for a special alcoholic beverage license. Attaches an application submitted by Alex Adler for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October 21st, 2023, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Camp Jocelyn, 150 Richardson's Corner Road for a wedding. The application was forwarded to the Police Chief, Building Commissioner, and Fire Department, and all have approved the application per the board's policy. If the special application license is approved, the dates on the license should be the day before the event and the day after the event to allow for pickup.
Congratulations, Alex. I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by Alex Adler for a wedding with the dates on the license to be October 20th through October 22nd, 23.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one?
All right. The next is also for a special alcoholic beverage license for St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus, 11379. Attaches an application submitted by Dennis Lattell on behalf of St. Joseph's, St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus Council, 11379, for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October 21st, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at St. Joseph's Church for the night, for the night at the races. The application was forwarded to Police Chief, Building Commissioner, and Fire Department. All have approved the application. The same conditions would apply to this license as well.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by Dennis Lattell on behalf of St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus Council, 11379, for the night at the races, with the dates on the license to be October 20th through October 22nd, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Charlton Historical Society, also a request for special alcoholic beverage license. Attaches a application submitted by Charlton Historical Society for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October 8th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Ryder Tavern, 255 Stafford Street, for history day open house. Application was forwarded to Police Chief, Building Commissioner, and Fire Department. All have approved the application. Same conditions.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by the Charlton Historical Society for the history day open house with the dates on the license to be October 7th through October 9th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trick or treating. It's that time of the year where the board is asked to set the date and time for trick or treating. Halloween, Halloween is Tuesday, October 31st, 2022. Last year, the board voted hours to be 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Chief Dowd approved as well, but will leave the times and date up to the board. I'd also recommend, I'd also like to invite the board to join the employees on October 31st, 11:00 a.m., when the children from the library come over to the town hall in costumes and trick or treat in the building. The employees do their best to make it as fun as it. Children dress up, as well as pass out candy.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we officially designate Halloween hours from 5:00 to 7:30, and as a reminder, those who are for reelection this year have to get full-size candy bars.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Madam Chair, I'd also like to make a motion that we, that we close the town hall at 4:30 on that day to allow the employees to get home, to have, go have some fun with their kids.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Selectmen, your next meeting date. So the next meeting date is scheduled for October 10th, 2023, but special town meeting is the very next night. Does the board wish to hold a meeting on the 10th and 11th or hold a pre-town meeting at 6:00? Take care of any business needed.
Madam Chair, I would love just to hold the pre-town meeting, but instead, do it at 6:30? Because we always end up, like, hanging around.
Do you have an idea about the agenda for that day?
This is everything that we have to date, so it would be probably just administrative stuff.
So I'd say let's meet at, on October, Wednesday, October 11th, at 6:30 p.m. over at Charlton Middle. Yep.
And Andrew, you're, you're out of town for a couple of days and coming back.
I will be back by the 10.
By the 10?
Yeah.
So we good for 6:30?
Yeah.
We meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye. I've been meaning to change that 6:00 to 6:30, but four years.
Knights of Columbus, they have a request for a Tootsie Roll Drive. Sorry, it's at the very end. So a voluntary toll road. So the Knights of Columbus Council, 11379, seeking to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive to benefit Charlton, or children with special needs and disabilities. They would like to set up a voluntary toll road on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the corner of Main Street and Masonic Home Road. This request has been forwarded and approved by, by Police Chief Dowd, contingent upon the following safety precautions. All volunteers must wear bright colored vests, yellow, orange, green, or red, while soliciting donations. Orange cones must be set out on Main Street and Masonic Home Road for a distance not less than 50 feet on each respective way prior to reaching the toll station. A minimum of five traffic cones on each roadway should be put in place at a distance no greater than 10 feet apart. Signs warning, voluntary toll road ahead must be erected on both Masonic Home Road and Main Street, not less than 75 feet from the toll collection area. Should you approve this request, I ask that you consider including Chief Dowd's recommendation into the motion.
So moved, contingent upon the chief's requests.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys are still waiting on any call.
You don't want to, because someone's not here.
We're waiting on, what are we waiting on?
Coram on a.
Coram for FinCom. All right. I'll fire through my report.
Yeah.
All right. Municipal broadband. So following the comments brought forward during the last meeting by resident Anthony Abbe, I did some outreach to communities that have pursued establishing a municipal fiber program for its residents. So the town of Wilbraham has been engaged in this work ever since 2013. The process itself is guided by a broadband committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The town had established a municipal light plant via two town meeting votes in, in which the municipal broadband enterprise would operate under once it eventually got up and running. In 2020, the town issued an RFQ to develop a broadband master plan. The cost of this study was about $20,000. The study included feasibility analysis along with reports on network design, architecture, cost analysis for construction, cost analysis for network operations, customer acquisition, and project risk management. This fall, the community is looking to issue an RFP to select an open access partner and another for network design. Soliciting the board to see if there's any interest in pursuing this type of initiative any further.
So if it was, if it was $20,000 in 2000?
This is 2020. They got the.
2020?
Yeah.
What would it be? $40,000 now?
It might be 25. I mean, studies are relatively benign when it comes to escalation, because you're not talking about a service.
But, but then, then the responsibility, and this is more for people at home also. So then the responsibility is on the town at that point. So our, is it our DPW or is it our?
So what would be required is that the town would have to actually take the applicable votes of creating a municipal light plant, so essentially establishing a new enterprise fund, then essentially appointing or determining the rationale as to how the committee that guides that would be appointed, and they would essentially, similar to a water and sewer commission, be responsible for setting rates and, you know, guiding the process forward.
But, but, but we don't, and to the chair, but we don't have the municipal light plant or?
Correct. That's how, that's how far back this is.
No, no.
So, anyway, information to chew on can be a topic of discussion for a future meeting, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think we'd want to do anything until May anyway on this, at the earliest, so.
But I will have a discussion on it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just queue it up.
That potentially gives us the opportunity to look at that DPW super position.
Exactly.
Oh, that's a.
You know, multiple birds, one stone. See what happens.
So, community compact grant, the town has been awarded two community compact grants under the administration's Best Practices Program. One is for an evaluation of our current comp and class plan to ensure that our non-union personnel, our positions are accurately graded and that job descriptions accurately reflect job duties. And the other is to engage a consultant to create and distribute a community business guide to promote the town's development goals and also outline the community's policies and procedures related to zoning and permitting.
You guys are showing off in the office now.
Well done.
Absolutely.
Nice job.
Yeah, yeah.
On October 24th, at 7:30 a.m., we're going to be doing a, the EDC is going to be hosting a business roundtable in the Senior Center. Roundtable, we're going to hope to identify some barriers to development within the community, gain some feedback, how we can better provide resources for the local business community, and of course, board members, you're invited to attend.
And that date, again?
Tuesday, 24th.
Tuesday, October 24th.
Okay.
Yeah. There'll be additional information provided on social media to officially sign up for that. And our all boards meeting, we have scheduled for Tuesday, November 7th, at 6:30 p.m., also in the Senior Center.
Madam Chair, just two very, or one really just quick thing, probably, that would probably fall into other business. Andrew, I can't remember if we've done it. Can we reach out to the principals over at Daypath and Shepherd Hill about the student rep? I can't remember if we've done that.
Yeah, we did yesterday. They were supposed to have somebody.
About the what?
About our student reps.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And Pete mentioned it, but seriously, don't forget about this weekend around Route 20. It's going to be an absolute disaster, and let's not pretend that it's not going to. So avoid it if you can. Try to hit up the restaurants like Dad's and, you know, Quodokeg while you're there, but it's going to be bad. Just go look out on the Mass DOT site. I put something on my page. I think the chief put something out on, on, on the police page, too. So again, I really, really want to emphasize that it's going to be bad this weekend. Cool? I'm good.
All right, good.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
No. Yeah, it's always the finance committee, because.
Pointing fingers.
Well, Jim, no, which Jim?
Am I, am I past the quest, the part of questioning things that came up outside of agenda?
Well, we've got a couple minutes, right?
Since we have HR sitting here, I was asked a question. Is it, is it, is there a document that states that people can, people who carry an LTC cannot come into the town hall?
We don't have one in HR.
We have no policy on it.
We have, we do have the, in the handbook, there is no, no gun policy, no weapons in the building, but that, it's in the hand, the personnel handbook that we're holding. It's not specific to an LTC.
It came, it came up and then it kind of generated a little bit, and someone asked me the question. I didn't know the answer, and I don't. So, so if you have a board member, I don't think any of us, but, but if you have another board member that has an LTC, are they allowed to carry their weapon into the building?
There's nothing illegal about somebody that has a license to carry this. Some stipulations with the schools, because it's a mass general law. Now, you could just deem this place through town action and say, hey, we're a gun-free zone, but you'd have to post it and make people aware of it, because what about the post office? Or what about the bank? Or, I mean, that kind of defeats the purpose of people being able not to go to this particular building. The school's a specific mention.
I can completely understand the school part, and, and I get it, but, but there were, someone sent me a, an HR document that said no one can come into the town hall or library or any official, it's part of their, does anybody know anything about that? I read it.
It's part of, it's part of the personnel handbook for, for employees, but not for residents.
So.
So someone who works here.
But if, but if you're, but if you're serving, if you're elected to an official board, at that point, are you a resident or an employee?
You don't fall under the employee policies.
You, you are technically a municipal employee, because that's why we all have to take our ethics training, a conflict of interest, et cetera, et cetera.
I understand. So, so then, they're, they would be banned from being able to, with a, with an LTC into a town meeting if, into a board meeting?
We'd have to probably talk to our HR attorneys about it to see exactly if they would fall under personnel or they, or like, or, or some other thing.
So you said town meeting, and all our town meetings are held at the middle school, so that would be prohibited.
No, yeah, yeah, it's not town meeting, but if, but if, just board meetings. If it's a, if it's planning board or, or conservation or, or anything else.
Andrew, may, may I recommend that we just ask, you know, Jim, and just say, hey, what, like, how would an elected board member, how would that follow?
Yeah, I mean, typically, I mean, like, even for the police, there's a different set of.
Right.
You know, policies that relate to.
You're, you're correct. It wasn't, it wasn't town meeting. It was more just town hall.
Board meeting.
Legally, you would have to notify somebody, no firearms, you know, they have, you can't just walk in and be penalized. You could ask them to leave, but there's no, there's not a violation of chapter.
Right.
Yeah.
Illegal carrying a firearm here. You don't want them in the building. They, you would have to put them on notice.
Okay. All right.
So we'll get an answer from Jim.
So then we'll, we'll answer that up, then, yeah.
Do you guys want to come up and?
No.
Well, I mean, what do you want to do? We don't have a forum. We can't hold a meeting, so that's why we will hope to keep them logged in by now.
I just texted. He has not answered.
So we're closing the water?
Yeah. We may, yeah, we can have a discussion about, I mean, you guys, you guys just can't take a formal vote on your recommendation.
Which you could probably do before your next FinCom meeting, or, I'm sorry, during your next FinCom meeting.
Right. But if you guys want to come up and discuss the, the articles themselves.
And we'll keep looking to see if you can. Excuse me.
Was the topic of our meeting last week, so we walked.
Was the topic of our meeting last week, so we walked through every article when there's-
It was very exciting to watch afterwards, by the way.
So you guys don't have officially opened yet, but-
Okay.
All right. So you want me to walk through the, all right. So, scheduled to meet with finance committee to discuss, or to finalize the special town meeting warrant with motions. Uh, there are two articles that we added following the deliberation at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that I think that would need some direction from the board on, but I know at least the fire station one was talked about with, with Finance Committee before. Uh, so, um, during the previous discussion related to the fire station project, the board had opted to defer the consideration of proceeding with the full scope of the project until the May annual town meeting. But one item that we didn't really touch on was whether or not we wanna authorize any project funds for schematic design and design development. The authorization of these funds would allow the town to at least solidify the total cost of the project and proceed with construction after full approval sooner. So in accordance with mass procurement law, we would have to obtain an owner's project manager to go into this phase. The estimated cost for this would be about $75,000. Reaching out to the architect, the schematic design would take about eight weeks, including site survey, advanced design to a schematic level and focus on developing the site and landscape into more detail. The architect would perform a lifecycle cost analysis that would also be required and this phase would be about $200,000. The design development phase would take an additional 12 weeks plus the time to provide a cost estimate. This includes complete, to complete all design decisions and prepare detailed drawings, specifications to a final stage and to complete preliminary regulatory conversations with the town staff to, to the point where there is a, a mutual satisfaction on the project approach, essentially stopping before they submitted any final site plan applications and prepare a formal cost estimate. The estimated cost of this phase is about, is about $225,000. So by completing these phases prior to the full consideration, the town would have a more accurate construction cost estimate heading into full project authorization and avoid escalation by delaying the project by six months. The, during the construction, or consideration of the public safety building, this phase was completed prior to the loan authorization vote on the full project and then following the design development phase and, and approval of the project, uh, the project would move to design, to the development of construction documents, permitting, bidding, and then final construction. So that aspect of the construction documents, permitting, bidding, that was all done after the loan authorization vote the last time. The total request with, from this would be $400,000 from free cash and to utilize $100,000 for previously authorized funds under the, under the settlement, Cella settlement for capital improvements to complete this phase. And then additionally, we had added an article for consider, to consider renaming the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, which was requested on behalf of Chairwoman Zerowski.
So we closed the warrant last time.
Yeah.
So we'd have to reopen to do either one of these. Which I, generally I don't have a, at least on the first one, I don't have a huge problem with. On the second one, we can talk about it. I'm not opposed to the concept, the timing I'm a little iffy about. My worry about the fire department, and bosh, sorry through you, is that the last time we tried this on what I still consider relatively short notice, it failed a town meeting. We put a fire department only design up and it failed. And if we wanna try it again, that's okay, but if it fails now, this will not have my support under any circumstance in the next 20 months because the people would have voted no yet again. So do we wanna, and this is not a bad idea by the way, because if nothing else, it gives us a, a bellwether of like, okay, so are people gonna potentially support this down the road? But I'm gonna go back to what I said a few weeks back. This means that we have two weeks to socialize this. That's it.
And, and, through the chair, if I may, we, we've already spent $1.1 million on plans for the public safety building that are, I don't even know where those plans are, they're hidden somewhere. Hopefully we own them, but, but we're never gonna build it. Why, why would we? I was under the impression that we were gonna just lump all this in to the, to the original construction cost at the time of deployment. Not, not, not something that, that we need, I, I, I could not support four or 500 grand right now for-
Well, this would give us a leg up to be able to, so that, so that would be going to May. We have a real number to say, based upon X, Y, or Z, on what town meeting approved, we know with a certain level of confidence, this is exactly what it's gonna cost as opposed to, we think it's gonna be around 17.4 with, like, order of magnitude, but we're not 100% sure. Andrew, am I wrong?
Right, yeah, exactly. And this is, you know, essentially, these are numbers that were in that total project cost, um, that was provided. So, you know, assuming that the numbers remain the same, the ask then at the town, at the next town meeting would be, you know, 16.9.
Right.
Not 17.4 because this, this phase of the project would be complete.
Yeah. X minus 500,000.
But if it fails in May, then we lose this money?
You would have expended the money toward another project that didn't move forward.
Yeah, yet, yet again.
Say that again?
You would expend, you would essentially be expending the money toward another project that didn't move forward, assuming that you didn't take an alternate approach.
So essentially, we're making a little bit of investment here to get a hard number, which we could potentially lose the taxpayers' money if the project doesn't go forward, but in the end, the project, the total project cost will be less than the money we're investing now.
Correct.
And you avoid the, um, escalation cost by just not taking any action over the next six months.
So, so we expediting this later, if it goes through?
If it matters, what we did with the public safety building is in May of 18, we did the same vote, but we bought the land. And then a whole year later, so May of 19, we went forward the public safety, so that took you a whole year. And then the project cost, I think, was only at 22 million then, was at over 28 million at that time and a whole nother year later came and that wasn't even high, high inflation cost then. But we waited a whole year.
Yep.
Have, have we got to the point where, I, I remember when we bought the land, it was from Overlook, it was 270 grand for five years. Have we got to the point where we've gotten that money back? We don't own that land anymore or we don't?
No, we still own the land. But I think that there's something in the thing, if we don't, if we decide not to build on that, I think they have rights to take it back before we sell it, yeah.
Yeah, they, they can buy it back for the same price that they-
Right.
The original price. And they have, but they haven't, they haven't exercised that.
We haven't tried, we haven't asked to sell it yet. We own the land.
We should probably look at exercising that first before-
I believe it's their option, so-
It's right at first, if you use it right.
Right.
Oh, oh, oh.
Or, or a version thereof.
If we choose to sell, we have to give them first.
Yeah.
Right.
We can't just advertise it and let somebody else bid and then ask them to pay that same.
So what do we wanna do? Do we wanna move forward for October and basically roll the dice? And again, it's, it's, my only concern is that it's, it's only two weeks.
I know. I, I, I think it's, if, if the fire department was here, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pick on them too hard, but, but we, we need a cheerleader from the fire department.
I think on one hand, it's two weeks away, but on the other hand, we've been tackling this for years, so it's either, you know, time to get off the pot or, or make some progress on it, you know, and then May will be the ultimate decision.
This will require a majority vote of town meeting.
Yeah, and it's not like it's not out there. It's been out there for the past, what, two months when we had the design plans and it's, people know about it, it's out there.
Yeah.
I'm not ad- just for the record, I'm not adequately opposed to this. I mean, I think it's actually not a bad idea to say-
I, I totally think expedited, so, you know, anyway possible.
In fact, I'd even say to everyone now, if you're gonna vote no in May, vote this down in, in, in October.
Right, right, that's the money.
Yeah.
So our first step would be to take a vote to open the warrant, right?
If you wanna add this back on, you know?
But you don't, but you have to approve it and you don't have a-
No, it'll just be, it's just your vote, to open the warrant.
That's your call.
Okay, so we, so let's reopen.
So, yeah, so let's start there. Motion to reopen the warrant.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Warrant reopened.
So I'm actually okay adding this. Like I said, I think it's, I think we're rolling the dice a bit, but I think I'd rather get it out there now, get some work started and, but really, if you're gonna vote no in May, vote this down. I do not want to waste $500,000.
And I have a full faith in people and I'm with it and I should go on a warrant and, and that's my point of view.
Right.
And I'll note, sorry, to the chair, I'll note too that when we, the fire station only plan would fail the last time, we were looking for a loan authorization, so it did, so it failed barely by a two-thirds majority.
Agreed.
Where this is a, a majority vote.
But there has to be a majority vote at the top.
Correct.
On this one, yeah, because we're not borrowing. So anyway, I'm just gonna make a mo, for discussion, nothing else. I, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that, that we, that we add this proposal on.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
All right.
I support.
And just so, I had told FinCom last week too, if this fails, um, my, our thought process is taking this 400 and putting it into stabilization, so someone will have to make a motion on the floor to move that money.
Oh, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
No.
You might have to fight him.
I don't even think we need to vote on that.
So that's why, that was our little thought process of putting it before the stabilization vote, so if it does fail, at least then we can put it in stabilization and just sit there.
I think it's a great idea.
All right. Do you wanna go one by one or do you wanna tackle the last portion of that?
Do you add, talk about number 10 first before you close the warrant?
Mm-hmm.
Which one was 10? Oh, yeah.
Then you have the Select Board one.
So, Madam Chair, I, I believe that you asked for this?
I did.
So, I like the idea, I don't have a problem with it. Procedurally, I have a slight problem with it, only because we closed the warrant last week and I know we just reopened it for the fire department, but I consider that to be more of a serious, like impactful decision-making. What I don't wanna see happen is future boards say, well, we're closing, well, we're, we're gonna shut down the warrant, but then one of us says, well, you know what, I kinda want something, so we're gonna reopen it. That's my only concern about this. This to me is something that I have zero issue with. It just procedurally, we really should be drawing lines in the sand unless it's something that's really important. Like, uh, last year or two years ago, we, we did it for the, for the senior center. We either kept it open or like reopened it. I was like, all right, extenuating, I, I, I could deal with it. This one, I don't know if it's, if it's pressing enough to make the case to say that, that it can't wait till May. I'm not gonna lose my mind about it. It's just, I just wanted to vocalize it, but, I don't know.
We already reopened the warrant, so I don't-
Well, through the chair, I think that, um, I tend to agree with Bill, but, but this is something we've been talking about for a long time. It's not like we're opening up the warrant for a dog park, right? Not, not that anyone wouldn't want a dog park. This is a fire substation building that we've been talking about for a couple of years now.
Oh, sorry, Steve, I'm talking about the renaming, the Board of Selectmen to, to like Select Board now?
Select Board. The second one.
I look at that one, like, we forgot to talk about that last, to finalize that last week, the fire station. So, I mean, I think there was justification to reopen. I kinda in agreement with Bill on this one. You know, I don't know who from the community would wanna come and, come and speak on it prior, so I, it's, it's a totally separate article that we haven't, you know, discussed.
I mean, I'd be fine doing this in May, let's put it that way, but-
I think that should be done before, I've been waiting a while.
So then let me ask a question, and this is not like, it didn't type anyway, why didn't we talk about it last, last meeting or the meeting before?
We did talk about it before, a, a, a while, while, while back. That's just coming back, that was a while back, last year or so.
Okay.
I just, I just put it to Steve. No, I, I, it was something I was talking to Andrew about and we just wanted to see if that would be okay to just put it out there and get it over with.
I mean, the fact that we've already reopened it, I'm kinda like, okay, fine, I'm gonna do this, but I'm almost arguing more on principle that if this were a standalone, I would've said absolutely not, so-
Yeah, if it was standalone, you probably wouldn't bring it up.
Yeah, but since, since, since the, since the warrant's already open, I'm okay with it, but I'm just gonna let everyone know, anything like this, again, I'm voting no. So, anyway, I'm, I'm fine making the motion to, 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 to like add, to like add Article 10.
This is, this is, and I agree, this is a standalone, but it's, it's a little bit of a perpetual standalone. We've been talking about this for a long time.
No, it is a separate-
We haven't talked about it since I've been on the board.
Nope.
No.
So I'm-
Steve, do I have a, we have-
I mean, I, 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 I want the motion to, to add it begrudgingly.
Steve?
Aye.
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 Well, we have majority, we do, three, a one, so it goes on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine voting against this, but again, I'm not happy about it, but I would, I would just ask board members as a whole that we don't do this anymore.
Okay.
Ashley, do you wanna go through the finance articles?
Yes, so I do have one more.
Ashley.
I know, it's not my fault, yell at Amazon. I have one more bill of a prior year that will get added on here that, that added today, so you don't see it reflected in your copy, but it will be reflected in the printed copy.
Why do we have so many from like, from like Amazon?
Um-
I know it's not your fault, I'm, I'm just dumb.
No, because if you notice, my department's not on here at all. We're really good at paying our bills. No, I'm just kidding. Um, we got a statement in the mail and randomly these are all on here, so I don't know why. So, Jack and I have been working on cleaning it up.
Andrew, do me a favor, fix this.
Ashley, fix it.
So, we have one more Amazon bill on here. So there'll be one more, but those are our laundry list of bills of a prior year, hopefully that's the last one.
But whose fault was it? Meaning, and, and I mean that nicely, did they not send us the bill in time or did, or did we, or did we just?
I think it's-
We, did the collective, we said-
So the feedback I've been hearing from all the departments is if we order anything on Amazon, and I'm sure you guys all see the same thing, but you probably don't really see it, they ship it from different areas, so you get a P L. that says, okay, your order's been shipped and then you get an invoice, but it's partial of your order if it comes in two pieces. So I think people have been thinking, oh, here's my whole, and not like super paying attention, like, oh, I paid my Amazon bill and then not paying attention when they get a second, because a lot of these are like split orders.
All right, can we make a policy that we don't order, order anything after June 15th anymore from Amazon?
Well, a lot, some of these are like from like December.
December?
Yeah, some of them are from like December, January. There's like half, two of them that are from like December, January, I think that somebody just forgot to pay.
I mean, it's not a huge deal, I just don't like saying so, it's just-
I don't either, because then it makes us look like we're, we're not paying our bills, but-
Anyway.
Yeah, so I, we're just-
Motion to recommend.
Yeah, so we're just trying to clean it. We're, we're not cleaning up our Amazon account. So we've been trying to keep a better eye on it. They don't send us sta, they randomly send us statements. So we're going to start logging in and looking at everybody to keep track of everybody. And they don't apply our payments correctly either, which is also another topic.
Did you say that you had one more on this one?
Yeah, I have one more Amazon bill to add, I'm sorry, for a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So you have, you're going to have one more bill prior here on this list when you see it in the warrant.
Motion to, for the Board of Selectmen to, to recommend our Article one passing as amended for what Ashley's going to come up with.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Please don't let me see this mean the next year.
We've been really good at no bills of a prior year for a while.
I know, that's why I was shocked when I saw this.
Um, next one is interdepartmental, interdepartmental transfers and appropriations of our twenty-four budget. So we have our, rest of our OPEB funding per our trust fund plan. We have two transfers from the Dudley Charlton Regional School District Assessment Lines because the, our, we voted a higher budget. So there's extra there that's going to go to the police department. And then the stipends and funding capital stabilization. That's that list.
Where's?
For Article two.
Where's that fifteen thousand that we were going to do?
Oh, that's in, um, capital items.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah.
All right, motion.
This is all like budget money.
Yeah, yeah, that's my bad. Uh, motion to recommend passage of Article two as, as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I did, yes.
On, on, on that topic still, with the schools, have we had, had any discussion with what they're thinking, their crystal ball is going to look at?
We laughed because we literally just had this conversation like three hours ago.
I was assuming, I was assuming it goes to October town meeting.
You know, in February, I just don't want to have a.
Yeah.
That was literally our conversation.
Yeah.
We're probably not going to know anything until the state.
Typically, they like, they, they, we kind of get the line of, we won't know where we are until we see what the state numbers are.
Yeah.
Because, um, they rely on the minimum student contribution numbers that come out to the state and whatever's coming in from chapter seventy.
Yeah.
So they're very reluctant to provide even a high-ball estimate. So we kind of have to derive our own, based off of historical.
They can still come up with their operating budget and then we can deduct those out of there, you would think.
You would think so, yeah. Um, last year was six percent. I think it was one and a half the year before. So.
But that first budget came in, it wasn't twelve percent or seventeen.
Well, that was our assessment, but their total operating.
Budget was a six percent increase.
I think we have to formally request them to proceed with a number and then we can deduct whatever funding they get. Because I mean, coming, waiting to February to, if it's a big number that we have to come up with is late.
No.
I'm with, uh. No, I.
I'm with Pete on this one.
I'm with Pete on that one too. It, it just delays any progress, any plans that we have going forward too, right?
We can reach out.
I'd rather have them come in high early so we can plan for it and then deduct if necessary.
We can reach out and see what they say.
I don't know if I give them that. Coming realistic.
You have to get through Dudley no matter what.
Yeah.
Um, so Article three is an amendment to the FY twenty-four budget for sewer enterprise to fund their other half of their, um, water sewer commission stipend. So there's just an increase from their, um, user fees for thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article four is all of our capital items. So the first motion here is all the smaller departments. So you have, um, two for Selectmen. Um, one, Andrew nicely volunteered for our open placement recreation plan update, which we have to do this year. And then the grant fund matching, which will stay there until we have a grant that we need fund matching for. Um, we have two for municipal buildings. One's for the HVAC upgrades at police station to put some mini splits in. One is for some improvements here at town hall. Um, the normal technology improvements, capital, um, technology improvement, um, article that we have for Jeff. We have two for cemetery, one for a mower replacement, one for a ripper tooth for the mini excavator he just bought. Um, the landfill monitoring is mandated from D E P. That we have to have funding for the closing of the landfill.
And, and this is the one where we're doing the administrative.
Yeah, so it used to be, yeah, it used to be in his budget. Now because it closes out, we're going to fund it through capital. So he has the article until it's spent. And then we have two for the library, one to finish out the rest of their roof project for the hundred and fifty and then the seventy thousand five hundred to replace and up, replace and fix her fire pond and sesterne pipe system. That's out in the back.
Can't believe it cost that much money. That being said, I mean, these are all reasonable requests. There's nothing on here I look at and go, oh my God, I can't believe they're asking this. This is all stuff that we need. Uh, motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion two is going to be for the D P W. We have one for the skid steer with some attachments and then a new sander.
Nick just gets the job, he's already asking. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Sorry.
No, it's good.
Uh, motion three will be for the police department for three cruisers, replacement if possible. Um, and then the fifteen thousand that Selectman Singer asked for last week for their tactical gear and training equipment.
That's all cool. Chief, question, how quickly can you get these cruisers, guys? Are we still waiting on these from like last year? Like, I know it's not you, I'm just.
I'm on the crystal ball from Amazon, but afraid that it's going to. No, it's, it's just been a nightmare. It's, it's a lot of it is the stuff that goes in the cruisers, to be honest with you. So a lot of times they, they promise they've got cars, cars on the lot, but.
But you don't have the stuff for it.
It's actually always true.
Like they sucker us into two cars last year, said, oh, we have them on the lot.
But they don't have the stuff for them.
Where are they? Are they in Ruby Head or?
Supposedly they got them, you know, you're dealing with car salesmen. No offense to anybody who might be a car salesman, but, you know, we've been lied to.
I get it.
Van boozled and hoodwinked.
And that tactical gear, chief, if you don't need it, that's coming back to us, right?
I'm sorry?
And that tactical gear, if you get grants or if you don't need it, that's going to come back to us.
That's the plan and we're actively looking.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, Stephen, I think I cut off.
My, my, my question certainly isn't about tactical gear. If you guys think you need it, you get it. The, um, as far as the cruisers though, so you, you, we've already ordered three and there, you haven't gotten one yet, right? And now, and now, and now we're about to order three more, which is prudent. I get that.
Yeah, so they're hoping these, you know, a lot of it was the, obviously what happened during COVID. Nobody had chips and that slowed the whole process down. And there were people waiting longer, so I'm sure car salesman, our cars, our, the person that was our salesperson left. He went, did a career change. So I'm assuming the other sharks jumped in and took what was coming for him and passed it around to satisfy their long-time customers.
Right.
But we were misled. We have new salesperson, he's from the areas from Oxford. Other than being a firefighter, I like the guy. But he seems to be right on top of things and he says this won't happen again. So we're optimistic.
This is the thing we're facing with all of our vehicles. I think any vehicle that we ordered last year, we still haven't seen, so.
And I can't imagine we're the only ones, I mean.
Absolutely.
Oh, no.
That's what I do here wherever I go. Some people are saying, oh, we're almost a year and a half. We've got, you know, supposedly a car on the ground.
Better to queue up now. Uh, motion to recommend is passage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And everything new is, are Tahos, you're going Tahos?
We went with Tahos because they were quote unquote on the ground and they were cheaper. So there might be a little bit more of a cost because they're a big, bigger vehicle. We figured we might have a little bit of fuel usage and possibly tires and brakes because they're a heavy car. But so far they've been coming back, the departments that were supposed to get them after us that already have them are saying they're pretty good and they like, we'll see.
Yep.
Um, you know, there was Ford stopped doing the incentives. So at one time, you know, Ford was the product because they made it cost beneficial to take it. So now that Ford is no longer, they can sell the cars. You, you, you know what, when crazy with COVID, we, people were paying over asking price. So there was no reason to discount a car and sell it to the police departments anymore. They decided to stop doing that altogether.
Yeah.
As the market gets corrected and things get back to normal, hopefully there'll be some incentives. And I'm not, I don't have stock in Chevy or Ford. Provide decent profit.
I know. I, I, I do remember the email explanation between, um.
What helps is if we can reuse stuff, but every time the model changes, then, you know, the things no longer fit, that's the problem. You'd like to have, if something breaks down, we, oh, if it gets into an accident, I can take things out of it and put them in the new car to save money. But things that are going to Tahoe necessarily don't afford. That's the only problem.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to Article five, the fire substation. As Andrew explained, we're going to take form from free cash to fund the design and chief procurement officer. And, uh, town council added if we need to enter into lease agreement since we're putting it on school property, which I think we should be fine.